All right. You guys ready to get started? Okay, well, welcome to the April 16, 2018 work session of Falls Church City Council. We are delighted you all are here with us this evening. Can anyone hear me? Does anyone want to hear me? That's a better question. Okay, well, let's go ahead and get started. Before we do get started, though, I understand it's Mr. Lichtenhouse's birthday yesterday.
Happy Birthday.
And he was upset that we sang "Happy Birthday"
Totally inaccurate.
For Mr. Z last month, and no one was intending to sing "Happy Birthday" for him today, so...
Phil, if you would get us started.
Birthday, dude. For you, too, over there, so I think you're all set for the evening.
I'll just bring it for you.
Yeah, that's right. All right, well, congratulations to you. And, Mr. Shields, thanks for coming out. And I guess you've got the third quarter report coming up at the first item of the agenda, so do you want to go ahead and bring that on us?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. At tonight's work session, this is designed really to be your work session. Staff presentations will be at a minimum, but we did want to share the third quarter financials, which are always come due at this time, and then discuss changes that the council wants to have, either plus or minus, to the budget. We will have a briefing on elderly tax relief from the treasurer. And so those are the agenda items. We would ask also for a closed session at the end of the meeting, and we've got a form for that, and we can take that up at the end of the meeting. We think it would be very brief. So that's the agenda for tonight. So with the first item, the financial report, Ms. Bawa will give that report, and I think the main thrust of it is, is that it seems to indicate that our projections for the FY19 budget are on track, and so we'll just provide a few details on that.
Good evening, Mayor Tarter and members of the council. The third quarter projections for fiscal year 18, we're looking at the data for most categories for nine months and some of the indicator categories for seven to eight months. And overall, based on our projections and the data we have so far, we are expecting a .3% over budget, partially by revenues, $150,000 better than budget target, and partially by some savings for vacancies in the expenditures. And at this time, we are projecting an overall, so this is .3%. If you may recall, the fiscal year 19 proposed budget includes a 3.7% organic growth. And... I don't need it on this screen. And so with that netting, the .3, leaves us a projection of 3.4%, which is quite competitive with other jurisdictions and the market indicators in general. So we feel comfortable that the fiscal year 19 revenues are sound and in line with our performance so far for this year. With that, open to questions.
Wait, did you say it's a 3.7 increase or a 3.4% increase?
3.7 is in the budget.
Okay.
And this shows that we have a saving of .3, so I'm netting that. If we were to follow this trend...
Right.
So then it becomes a 3.4%.
Oh.
See? Just incorporating this trend.
Yeah, it's just a little math moving around there, okay.
Ms. Hardy?
Thank you, Mayor. So I noticed that we had noted that revenues were up, except for B-Pole and license and permits. I think we attribute license permits due to delay in construction projects. Any sense on why B-Pole's down?
It's hard to tell primarily. What I'd heard was some of the construction projects that pay more business, since there was a little drop in that. That's what is indicating. However, there is an offset in some other taxes that kind of offsets that, but we also see during this time of the year some delinquencies, and we are working with the commissioner's office to make sure that we are able to collect as much as possible before the end of the year. And they did come out good last year, so I'm hoping that we'll work on the delinquencies again this year.
And one more question on personal property going up. Is that, again, just due to really good collection? I know that the treasurer and the commissioner of revenues office have been working really hard at capturing new cars that come into the city. Is that the main driver of why, because, you know, personal property going up 8% over what we forecasted is really good?
Yeah, it's mainly, primarily, the new cars that came to the city, and it's collected earlier on in the year, so it kind of keeps reflecting as we keep going through the quarterly reports.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
So those new cars are because we have new residents, right? Essentially?
Also from Dan.
Or it's Dan.
Dan probably happened with a new car. It's an increase.
But we could, it's pretty easy to tie.
Either that or people buy new cars, right?
People buy new cars, but there are more cars in the city because there are more people in the city, right? Can I ask a question, too, about, so that .3% overage comes out to be about $303,000? Is there anything that, in your unders on the expenses, that will have to be carried over? Or have you done that already?
We have accounted for the existing contracts that need to be paid up, so after accounting for and looking at the payroll trends based on the nine months, this is our projection so far.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions, Mr.?
So, your commercial advertisement here, "Thanks to strong economic development and revenue growth and careful spending, we received this happy report here tonight, which is $300,000 to the good." That's a very nice number. It's not an enormous number, but it is an important number. You know, there's been a lot of talk about, you know, nickel and diming as we go through the budget process, but, you know, here in the little city, nickels and dimes add up to real dollars, so that's why we are so carefully scrutinizing everything that we spend and do. One question, the second paragraph, I just need to understand, the 3.7 organic revenue growth with no real estate tax increase. What does, what does no real estate tax increase mean?
So the budget, the proposed budget includes 5.5 cents, as we had proposed.
Uh huh.
And that was a 7.6% overall revenue growth, but just looking at the organic growth based on...
Understand, so just the organic growth.
Not accounting for the existing real estate revenue coming in.
All right, that's the effective rate, basically. Okay, thank you.
And with that, I would, more to your question, earlier question, we will be bringing budget amendments later on, either later May, early June, so, you know, if there are any unforeseen circumstances or budgets that need to be, so we'll be bringing that to council and other grants. We normally do that end of the year anyways, so...
Ms. Hardy?
So one more question. So if we do end up $300,000 above what we projected at the end of the fourth quarter, what is staff's recommendation with that surplus?
We'll have to, since this year we are in the 17%, and next year we are in the 17% fiscal policy for fund balance. First of all, we look at that. That is primarily the first thing we look at. Then after that, we would look at any other one-time needs or put it in reserve. Personally, as staff, I would recommend putting it in the capital reserve. We are going to embark upon another $150 million in the next two years, or three years, and that would be a funding that would come handy should any of the risk factors play out, any delay in your economic development funding that was to come in, or any interest rate fluctuations that may come in the near future for the, as your CFO, that would be my recommendation.
The reserves or unassigned fund balance, is what I heard.
Yes, based on, first, whatever the fiscal policy calls, and then if we still have an overage, then it should go to the capital reserve.
Do we ever carry things over from budget to budget? It's like, well, I know that we don't, I think we have policy that we say we can't use it for ongoing spending. Is that...
Yeah, it's one-time money is, our policy categorically says one-time funds cannot be used for ongoing, as well as, you know, we will not know this till we do the CAFR, which is almost September, and end of September, so your budget for next year gets adopted now. So this is money that'll play itself out later.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Shields, do you have anything to add?
Nope. We just wanted to touch base with you on the financials.
All right. Sure, of course.
So, thanks for bringing this to us. Every time I sit here in April and we're getting close to the budget, there's always a different story on where we are in the previous years, and this is a good one, so that is encouraging. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on, then, maybe to the next item on the agenda, which is the budget markup. Before we get started, I have a disclaimer that I'd like to read, and I think Vice Mayor Connolly may have one as well. I'm going to go ahead and start, if you don't mind. "I have consulted with the city attorney and want to make the following statement regarding discussion of the budget. My wife works for the Falls Church City Public Schools. Therefore, I am a member of a class of three or more persons who may be affected by council's action on the budget. However, I can participate in this matter fairly, impartially, and in the public interest." Vice Mayor Connolly?
"I have consulted with the city attorney and want to make the following statement regarding discussion of the budget. I work for the Falls Church City Public Schools. Therefore, I am a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by the council's action on the budget. I can participate in this matter fairly, impartially, and in the public interest."
All right, Mr. Shields?
Thank you. I'll just provide a real quick summary of discussions over the last several weeks. The budget was presented to the council on Monday, March 12, and since that time, the council has approved the issuance of debt for FY, that will, the debt service will come online for FY19, and that debt issuance was approximately $7 million less than our initial forecast. So accordingly, there's a $400,000 decrease in the expected debt service for next year. So the budget was presented at 5.5 cents. With that one cent reduction, we would be at 4.5 cents over the current rate. The WAMADA subsidy, I want to provide just a quick update on that, and I'll note at the beginning that Councilmember Dave Snyder has been very attuned and active in the negotiations on resolution of the WAMADA issues. Cindy Mester has been our staff lead on tracking this as well, along with Kiran Bawa. I will just state, in terms of broad terms, kind of where we are in terms of our understanding of the numbers, with the big caveat that the General Assembly is not going to act on the WAMADA item until Wednesday this week. That's our best read of the situation. They will meet tomorrow for budget, but the WAMADA funding would be taken up on Wednesday. But based on the information that we have today, which is preliminary still, we believe that the appropriation needed from the general fund for WAMADA in FY19 will be just over $1 million, $1,5670. That's our estimate. That is, that represents an increase of $217,000 over the current year, which is the equivalent of approximately a half penny on the tax rate. So if that were the financial plan that we took into FY19, subject to council action on the 23rd, then what would be required is a 2.5 cent increase on the tax rate, all other things being equal. So that's the change from the 5.5 cent increase on the tax rate that the council was presented initially on March 12. The other items, and this really kind of gets into, then, the markup discussion, one that we would bring to the city council's attention, and we'd be happy to answer any questions on WAMADA, but I'll just touch on the last item for the staff report. When we're looking at the transient occupancy tax, if council will recall, there was a 1% increase in the TOT last year with those funds dedicated for commercial district improvements. We had initially budgeted $60,000. The 1% increase in the TOT is actually generating $90,000, so we would bring that to your attention with the suggestion of a $30,000 increase on the expenditure side for commercial district improvements that would be offset by new revenues. And we would dedicate those to the items that have been listed in the past for downtown improvements, and they would include lighting, wayfinding signage, planters, flowers, assistance with public parking, all those types of things, and we would come back with, to the council with more detailed plans for the use of those funds. So those are a couple of things that we wanted to touch on. Well, I'll just note, we also have a memo from the treasurer on tax relief, and maybe before we jump into that item, we'll see first if there are questions on the items that I've discussed, and then if the council would like, we can get a more detailed briefing on the tax relief options that have been put in your packet for discussion tonight with the treasurer.
Okay, before we get started, why don't we turn it over to Mr. Snyder, who can maybe give us an update on metro and whatever else he'd like to talk about?
Sure. So if someone would have said six months ago that we'd be where we are today in terms of positive developments, I think most people would have said that's a bad joke. The good news is that we've come a huge distance in Virginia. Maryland has already approved their share, and the mayor of the District of Columbia has already committed, although their final budget process won't be over until June. There are really two options largely that common wisdom says will come out of Wednesday. The one is the conference bill that was already approved by the House and Senate. In other words, if the governor's amendments are rejected, then they would go back to that. If the governor's amendments are accepted, then in either event, the city of Falls Church does significantly better than, I think, that the city manager rightly built into our budget. The danger for us would be some sort of a weird third way that no one is expecting to happen at this point. In addition, the increase in the motor fuels tax is already law and signed by the governor. So the thought is that one of two things will happen on Wednesday, both are very positive from the standpoint of the city in terms of regional funding for metro. The other thing to keep in mind is that this is basically Northern Virginia taxing itself for Northern Virginia, and of course, Northern Virginia is also taxed for the rest of Virginia, but that's the reality that we're dealing with right now, and it was a huge team effort. I want to thank all the staff, I know Dave Tarter, everyone, and everyone on this council and in the region has been very much involved in getting us to where we are today, particularly the coalition of business chambers of commerce, the coalition of smarter growth and the League of Women Voters was a lot of the grassroots here. So, again, it looks positive right now. It could still misfire on Wednesday, so I just want folks to be aware of that at this point, so...
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you for your fine work in moving this along on behalf of the city. Ms. Hardy?
Thank you, Mr. Snyder and staff. Just a clarifying question. So the, the new numbers you quoted, Mr. Shields, the .5 cents, is that assuming that governor, the governor's amendments are accepted? And what do we, do we have an estimate for if the governor's amendments are rejected? It's my understanding is those amendments restore essentially two new taxes that I know that the Richmond, some Richmond Republicans are very staunchly opposed to.
The 217 assumes that the governor's amendments are not, but I'll caveat that, that we're trying to, we're drawing some pretty fine lines on numbers that have a lot of fudge factor to them. There are multiple things happening on the WAMADA about how, how this whole bill will be allocated when it gets to the NVTC. That's something we don't have clarity on. There's an audit right now in terms of the payments between Virginia, DC, and Maryland. The outcome of that audit is pending. So there's several issues that we think that regardless of what the governor, whether the General Assembly does in the governor's amendments, we think a half penny for WAMADA still is what would be needed under sort of the balance of how we think all those things are going to play out.
I think that's very important and true. The administration of this bill hasn't been sorted out, so when it comes into NVTC and it runs through our subsidy allocation modeling, the SAM, that's our hold harmless cause, we don't know what the impact is, and since some of this money, both the $154 million and the additional state money for WAMADA is coming off the top, it could have an impact one way or the other, and we just won't know for a while. Also, the part of this House Senate ensures that city council's fully funding the CIE, which maximizes your 30% draw, so that's another piece to keep in mind as well.
One more clarifying question, because we've talked a lot about the NVTA. So I know that we are going to NVTA with a bunch of grant requests, including the $15 million at George Mason that would be really impactful. Does that draw on this 30% or is that the 70% funds?
70%.
Okay.
And NVTA as a whole is losing 30% and 70%. The governor's amendment restores 2/3 about it and makes their grant application more or less whole. It will slow some applications. If we don't get the governor's amendments, then that will have a significant impact on the grant application process.
Because that's kind of what I'm getting at, is besides our direct kind of funding towards WAMADA, depending on how things play out Wednesday, are there going to be secondary impacts where we are banking on transportation grants or money that we are hoping NVTA would help fund with projects around the city that could then get impacted because there'd be less money in NVTA? How do we quantify that impact? And then, do we then have to figure out how to make up for that within our general fund if we think that those projects are high enough priority?
Well, for the 70%, it would be a significant ask if you were going to make it up for the general fund, because that'd be $15.7 million for West End. For the 30% in FY19, one of the big impacts would be is NTC is funded for $200,000 with 30%. So we would have impacts there, plus matching other grants, and so that 30% was really critical to save because you would have a significant impact on your CIP. We certainly will have an impact for 70% if the governor's amendments are not passed.
All right, other questions, comments?
Just, just one quick one. Cindy Mester and the staff have been absolutely great on this, and I especially want to call out Senator Dick Sasse-Law, who really made this happen, I think, in the legislature to get us to this point.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Ms. Mester, although we can't even predict what's going to happen this week, do you have any sense of what will happen next year with WAMADA funding?
If the bill passes, which has $154 million plus some DRPT commitment of 53% operating money off the top, it's designed to be continuous, so it would be replicated in the future budget. The state bill also caps WAMADA's operating budget at 3%, and if they get over it, they, there's penalties. So it starts to set us up for a better future. This $154 million matched by Virginia and DC, well, that $500 million will go a long way with the ongoing capital investment that's needed, so it should help start stabilizing our contributions. There always will be an increase, but it shouldn't be the spike like we're experiencing now. It's really critical that this dedicated funding get passed and adopted.
So I guess the corollary question to that is, if we expect $154 to come from Virginia as an ongoing, do we expect the impact of Falls Church being half a penny every year?
There will be an impact to meet your CIE, which changes every year because it's 12.5 cents on $100 of your commercial tax base, so as that goes up, our required match goes up. So I think you will always need something towards that. That's not the full and a half cent. Beyond that, we'll have to see how the implementation administration of this new bill plays out as it runs through the NVTC SAM funding models. So can't fully commit till next year and long-term impact.
It's an operating increase over last year's budget or this year's budget, and unless there is a need to decrease WAMADA's budget, which I don't foresee, this half cent is committed ongoing. Because they could have the 3% operating increase as well.
I'm just kind of keeping that mental tally, so we had deferred essentially a penny from not spending, not bonding the $7 million, so that's next year. We're going to be a penny more, plus maybe a half cent ongoing for WAMADA, or whatever, we can't commit to it, but I just want to keep that in mind that, you know, we're essentially at a penny and a half for next year, unless we can make it up with really great revenues again.
So this half cent gets built into your real estate tax rate, right? This year, and if you continue the same rate, the half cent is there.
Thank you. Does this, does this WAMADA funding tie into the administration's infrastructure plan? There was a federal capital financing plan where if local, state and local jurisdictions kicked in a certain amount for infrastructure that helped generate revenue, which WAMADA does, that there would be a matching at the federal level? Was any discussion around that? I mean, that's a question for Councilman Snyder and Ms. Mester. I don't know if this falls into that bucket, meaning could there be additional funds that would be coming to state and local jurisdictions as a result of this qualifying for that?
I have not heard that it would fall into the bucket. We do have the federal prea money, where the state's $50 million does match another $150 million from the feds, so I have not heard this WAMADA funding being used to leverage the other federal bucket.
Okay. But that was, that was in the, the budget resolution of only three weeks ago, or, you know, very recently that was signed into law, and so that was the other piece of good news for WAMADA funding that has happened just in the last month. I'm, I'm not completely informed on exactly the mechanics of how that works. If, if some of these projects that we do find as part of these budgetary discussions, that there is money coming from the federal government to match, how is it distributed down to state and local levels? I mean, do we have access to that? Is it like an application, like a, a grant? Anybody versed on the mechanics of...
We'll have to investigate that.
Okay.
I can't speak to it.
Okay, Ms. Hardy?
Sorry. So last time we talked about transportation funding, really early on, we talked about how we need to solve for WAMADA, but eventually the Virginia fiscal cliff, so all the other transportation needs. Does any of this take care of that, or is that still going to come?
The General Assembly has deferred action on dealing with the transportation bond cliff till next General Assembly. They focused only on WAMADA, so we still have that issue of bond finding.
Yeah, I expect that to be a major priority next year. There was a question as to whether these two were going to be resolved at the same time, whether the statewide fiscal cliff versus metro. Metro ended up being, hopefully after Wednesday, dealt with this year, and then we'll have to come back and go back to the legislature, and that will affect all transit systems across the state, so there ought to be a wider, broader amount of support for that. Two other things, you mentioned, Councilmember Hardy, we do have an application in for $15 million for the Haycock and Broad at NVTA, and we are lobbying and advocating that to move forward. You can't predict anything right now, but that's in the package of NVTA projects that are moving forward to a public hearing, and we have the cooperation and coordination with Fairfax County on that, which was really important. Then over at the NVTC side, because that project is really too big for the I-66, we have several smaller projects in, including the, carrying out the 3T.
Yes, restoring the 3T.
Right, to extend the 3T to replace the service that was lost, and that's in the process at NVTC. Again, no guarantees at this point.
And to the question about the cliff, part of the reason they were separated this year is that DRPT has some unfunded projects, and so they had some money available so it could delay the cliff by an extra fiscal year. So I think politically, the push and focus was on WAMADA, delayed it one year.
No sense how big that might be.
I don't have those numbers with me. I still serve on the statewide task force for transit, and we're meeting monthly now as we look at that and the new methodology for implementing all this new funding.
I just don't want to be surprised by more transit funding issues that'll come up next year, the following year.
So, thank you. So what I want to focus on is, you know, what will we know? When will we know it? And what impact does it have on the vote that we are supposed to take next Monday? Our senator was in town last night for an event with our delegate, and I had a chance to chat with him just for a minute, and without going into detail, let's just say that things down in Richmond are promising and moving their way along, but for whatever reason, there are delays, and this Commonwealth's budget is not acted upon until shortly before the deadline that the Assembly has to keep the... until shortly before the deadline that the Assembly has to keep the government operating. Does that have any effect on, you know, our situation? I mean, the money we're talking about is money that doesn't start getting collected and accounted for until the 1st of July. And by any stretch of the imagination, things in Richmond should be solved by then, right?
The budget, the budget bill is a separate bill than the WAMADA funding, and obviously the governor would like both to come out of the Special General Assembly session by next Wednesday. If they enacted on the WAMADA funding, just like the gas tax is already signed, it could proceed while we still have a state issue. That could impact other parts of the budget that I'll defer to Ms. Vow on. For better or worse, we are not highly dependent on state funding because of our composite index and other reasons here.
And are those other parts, I mean, some of those other parts of the budget, are they transportation-related? I mean, are there things that they could do in the General Assembly that would, you know, cause us to lose some of our WAMADA matching money, or...
Not from the budget, per se. It's more your police funding and your school funding that are state-funded.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, any other questions about this, Mr. Z?
Just a quick one here. On the second paragraph on the back page, we talk about its operating budget, and our funding subsidy requirement is about 70,000. So does that represent the 3% cap, or is it some number less than that?
It is within the 3% cap, excluding any debt service that we are paying on the previous, that we have issued through WAMADA.
Yeah, I guess my question is, could it be more to get to a 3%?
My understanding of it is, is that WAMADA is right at the 3% cap.
Right, okay.
They are, I mean, that was the deal, and I think they're going to, they're going to mind their Ps and Qs and stay within that deal.
Yeah, I find it unbelievable there would be anything less than 3%, knowing WAMADA. So I think we could probably expect something along this line each and every year going forward then, right? Okay, thanks.
And this dollar amount was a shift from what was in the proposed budget because WAMADA hadn't adopted their budget. And on March 22nd, the budget was adopted, and this was the final numbers. There was some shifting in their formulas for bus route allocation and so forth.
Okay. Any other questions or comments relating to this portion of our discussion? All right. Mr. Shields, do you propose we go on to tax relief now? Or, all right, Ms. Acosta, thank you for coming out and joining us this evening.
Mr. Z, I wonder if we could just borrow this chair.
So as Ms. Acosta is joining us at the table, I would just remind the council that what is in the budget is a $45,000 increase in funding for tax relief. And that 45,000 really represents a $90,000 change, potential change in policy, because only one billing cycle will be in FY19 and subsequent years. Two billing cycles would be. So whatever the impact is in FY19 would be doubled in subsequent years and stable after that. But that 90,000 represents over a 25% expansion of the existing elderly tax relief program. So I just wanted council to be familiar with those numbers. We've discussed them in the past.
So we've probably discussed them a couple of times, so I still haven't figured it out. Maybe you could explain that one more time, how it's going to be, I know it's, we're talking kind of half a year, but is the amount that's being suggested to be appropriated for the full fiscal year kind of going forward? Or is this your idea that this is the amount, and the first year will kind of an extra wave of it, and after that, it'll be spread out over the course of a year?
I think maybe a way to think about it is think of two different things. One, first is the policy question of how we're going to change elderly tax relief. So that's issue number one. And then, second, think about what the budget impact is. The budget impact, whatever the difference is in the policy, the budget impact is only going to impact next June's bill. And then in years after that, it will impact both the December and the June bill, so the impact is doubled.
So the amount you're proposing for relief, you just said it a moment ago, and of course, it's out of my brain already, is 45,000?
45,000 is what's built into the tax rates, what's built into the budget.
So you're proposing that in future years, it'd be $90,000?
That's right. If an ordinance was adopted to make the policy changes that we'll discuss with you in just a minute, the, we would need to add another $45,000 in FY20, and then the program is whole and stable with the policy changes.
So this year's, this year's impact is 45,000, but we need to remember if we implement it, next year's is 90 and going forward.
That's right. That's right.
All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Acosta, you're on.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Tarter, members of the council. So I'm back before you tonight with a couple of options for tax relief. The first attachment A was the comparison. I did get some more information about relief versus deferral from the other locality, so that's included in there. And we're just showing you a percentage of, on that first page, of relief granted and the percentage of deferral granted. And that's based on the FY17 real estate tax levy for each locality. So, and then the other thing on that comparison sheet is our program versus Arlington, Fairfax, Fairfax City, City of Alexandria. And then we have the second page, attachment B, which would be our current program is the square at the top, and then option one and option two, which are explained in the memo. Option one is basically the initial proposal that we had of granting 100% relief to those homeowners in that lowest income bracket, which would give the greatest benefit to the largest group of homeowners. And there would be no change to any other aspects of the program. And the cost would be $45,000 in FY19 with an additional 45,000 needed in FY20 or $90,000 annually. And it's confusing because the real estate billing is on the fiscal year basis, and tax relief is on the calendar year basis. So that's why, and they apply every year with the deadline being April 15th for their applications. And then that, so that calendar year would be the tax relief year. So that's why 45,000 this June, you know, or next June in FY19 would be the only impact to the FY19 budget. Each option is based... Sure, go ahead. Yeah.
I need more help.
Okay, sure.
To help, to help me, to help me walk.
To help explain it to the mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Okay, okay.
All right, so if we look at this top chart, the breakdown of current tax.
Yes.
So, the top chart, number 267, 770 is what we are currently doing.
Right. And that's based on the calendar year. So if you try to take it back to the FY, it's going to be a little off. Okay.
But then moving down to the next chart, that other number, 383, 301, is the new amount if we went with option one.
Right.
Right, okay.
Right.
So the first number is all deferral, right? So, I mean, you offered, tell me about the first, the first top of the page, this section here. The 267 represents...
Oh, okay, the 267. The deferral is $50,000 there. If you go down, you see it, 50,000?
Okay.
Third line from the top, the bottom. So that's what it currently is. And we charge interest on our deferral. So these are our current levels, based on the HUD AMI, the 30%, the 50%, and the 80% of the area median income. Our deferrals right now are about $50,000 a year, personal property 1,500, and then the veterans' tax relief is about $68,000.
So, Jody, we have level one. If someone makes $0 to $23,200 a year, they get $4,000 worth of relief. There are 30 people getting that, and the total amount is 113,677.
That's right.
Currently.
Yes.
And then level two is between 23 and 38,000.
Right.
And level three is 38 to 52.
Right, that's correct. Yeah, that's correct. And it's not just, someone asked me about this, at that top level one, it's not just 30 recipients times 4,000 each, because that doesn't equal 113,000. Because some of the people, their taxes are less than 4,000, so, you know, they're getting 100% relief already.
So some of them are getting the full relief. Okay.
Jody, could you explain the mechanics of who gets deferral and who gets abatement, I guess?
So people apply for relief, and they can defer, if there's a balance left over after they get their relief of either 4,000, 3,000, or 1,000, they can defer the rest of those taxes if they wish. Most of them choose not to, and the reasons they've cited are they don't want to pay interest, and they don't want to leave the burden to their heirs to have to pay off anything. They want them to inherit the house like free and clear.
So relief would, or deferral would only be for people who have property taxes over the relief amount. So let's say they had 6,000 in property taxes, we abated 4,000 of it, and we gave them 2,000, as you can defer the rest. There's no one that would get deferral above those income brackets, like outside those income brackets. Let's say they make 53,000 or had assets that were higher.
They could, up to 75, they could make up to $75,000 and defer 100% of their taxes. If they're over that top number, that 52, 550, but they're 75,000 or below, they can defer 100%.
Got it. So there's like a level four, that if you make up to 75, you don't get any, just pure relief, but you get deferral.
Deferral, yes.
For the full amount or for...
For the full amount.
Do we have anyone taking, what's the numbers?
We don't have anybody that's doing that, that's taken that 100% deferral.
Because, you think, we suspect because of the interest?
Most likely, that's the number one reason they cite. So I believe so, yes.
Jody, what's, what's the total amount of deferral that's been accrued since this program started? I mean, if you're collecting 50,000 a year, I would assume that fluctuates. I mean, what's, what's sitting out there?
Right now, it's about $400,000.
And at what point is that deferral redeemed? Is that, if a home is sold, if it's, someone's deceased and it's passed to heirs, what are, what are the legal mechanisms that trigger the deferral of, the taxes that have been deferred and accrued going back to the city?
So the sale of the home, if they decide, you know, the homeowner decides they want to move and they sell their home, they have to pay the deferral, the deferred taxes right away. Basically, it's settlement. If the homeowner is deceased, and the heirs have inherited the property, they have one year from the date of the death of the taxpayer or the homeowner to pay off those deferred taxes. And those would be the two scenarios, basically, for paying off the deferrals.
So the sale of the home by the occupant that's been deferring, and then upon the owner's passing, the heirs have one year to pay?
Right, right. That's right.
And currently, we are charging 3% interest?
Currently, I think it's 3.75%.
Okay. Does that fluctuate every year?
It does. It's based on the prime rate at January 1 each year. And I think it's, it has averaged about 3.25%.
Okay. I'm going to jump ahead a little bit. One of the things you proposed was to not charge interest going forward. Would we also wipe away all the old interest in the current program?
No, I'm not proposing that, no.
Okay, you're proposing to keep that interest and then change going forward?
Right, right. Effective whatever date we make the change to the ordinance.
Okay.
Jody, what's, how does the city account for the deferred taxes? Do we, do we accrue those amounts in the year that they are deferred?
Yes, so they're considered unpaid taxes. They're, they're considered unpaid taxes.
Okay. So we'll accrue them in the fiscal year that they've been deferred. So assuming, let's say there was a wholesale change in the policy, and we were to adjust a whole bunch of different mechanisms to where you drastically increased the amount that could potentially be deferred, we'd still accrue that revenue in the fiscal year when those taxes are due, interest or not?
Right.
Okay.
We move it forward as unaccrued balance that keeps carrying forward, and then we net against it.
I'm sorry, say that again?
It's booked as unreceived revenue.
It's accrued as revenue but unreceived.
Right.
Okay. Not expecting when that would be converted to actual cash?
Right.
Okay.
It counts against my collection rate.
So you don't win the trophy?
Yeah. Yes, that's right.
Other questions while we're taking a break? Ms. Conlon?
Nope, I'm just ready to go on to option one.
Ready on the button.
Letting.
Ms. Hardy?
To go back to the first attachment, where we're comparing our program against others. So I notice we have 54 parcels in the relief program currently. How does that compare with the second attachment where we broke down the people, and obviously, people don't always match up to parcels, but the numbers are a little different?
Some of them are, because I, again, it's like calendar year versus the fiscal year. So when, when everybody started giving me their totals from the other localities, it was all based on FY17 actuals. So to get to our FY17 actual, I had to take like the December installment from one calendar year or tax relief year, and the June installment from the other. So they don't quite match up, you know, if you're adding up like the 30 plus the 11 plus the 5. Plus also, some people, the deferral, some people get relief and they defer. So they could be combined under that deferral number.
Got it. So second question. So I was doing just some math based on the spreadsheet, just understand how generous our program is. I think we thought, we have a general thinking that, oh, gosh, when we look at our program, it doesn't seem as generous. But when I was doing, and you tell me whether this is the right way to look at it, is number of parcels in relief over the total number of parcels we have, to essentially get that ratio. Ours is not, I mean, it was definitely lower than everyone else, but not way out of line. So ours is 1.2% of the parcels were getting relief. Arlington was 1.4%, Fairfax at 2%, Fairfax City 3.4%, and Alexandria 2.4%. Is that the right way to kind of just...
That's how I had originally looked at it, and then we decided we wanted to look at the actual...
And then the other way I did it is actually use the relief numbers. I did dollars relieved over total real estate taxes.
Right.
And again, ours was definitely lower. Ours was 0.4%. Arlington's was actually 0.5%. And so I wonder if there's something, there's some interplay with their asset amounts, because their asset amounts are much lower than our asset threshold, and somehow they're just not catching as many people, even though it seems like their actual relieved amounts are actually going to be more generous than ours, right?
Right.
They're just not catching as many people as we thought.
Right, exactly. And they, and they have that 0% deferral, too. But one of the things I was going to talk about later in the presentation was Arlington's, they assigned a working group to study this, and they studied it for a year. And they've made a recommendation to their board to lower actually their income levels. So I believe their three tiers now are going to, the max amounts in each tier is going to be $45,000 for the level one, 55,000 for level two, and 65,000 for level three. So they're lowering their income amounts. They've raised their asset limit to 400,000 and, for exemption, and then they're keeping the $540,000 asset limit for deferral.
Are they doing that because of budget issues?
They, it, I don't know, but, you know, based on their presentation, they said they studied like national trends and everything else, so I'm not really sure.
Can you explain the asset limit? Is, does home equity included in that asset limit?
No, it's exclusive of the home or the dwelling in the land. It's strictly, you know, their assets outside of that.
Okay. What, are you thinking still, or?
I'm scribbling. I'll ask a question.
So I heard the asset limit does not include your primary residence.
Right.
Because I was thinking our asset limit was so high because our property values are high.
No, it doesn't include that, though, so.
Why are we the only jurisdiction that uses a dollar figure instead of a percentage?
You know, that I don't know. I was saying, before the meeting started, Falls Church is unique in all of Virginia in that the Treasurer's Office administers the tax relief program. In other localities, it's, it's usually Housing and Human Services. So I don't have that social services aspect of it. I don't really know why we have the dollar number. You know, is there, you know, when I got here, and I don't really know where it came from. Do you?
It's arguably more progressive if you have a fixed dollar amount as opposed to a percentage.
Do we adjust that dollar amount for inflation as the years go by? Or, I mean, when that $4,000 was set, was what year?
That would be even more progressive if we did that.
That's a nice way to say the glass is half full. So in other words, we haven't adjusted that number in eons, huh?
Well, we did. We did in 2014. Yeah, we did.
Okay, 2014?
It was 2,000, and we made it 4,000.
Okay.
Good.
All right, that's happy. Happy news, but we still don't, I mean, I'm, where I'm going is just administrative, you know, complexity and applicant, you know, complexity also. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking that maybe one barrier to entry is that it requires, you know, hiring an accountant to... know, hiring an accountant to qualify for, you know, relief. And, and I don't know if the percentage as opposed to the dollar figure makes any difference in that, but there are already things you have to calculate, your disability income, your Social Security, you know. It sounds like preparing your taxes, which has become complicated enough that particularly people of a certain age, you know, have difficulty with. I'm, I'm looking for any avenue that makes the application easier and the administration on your end easier.
Thank you. Thank you. The, we have a certification year every three years, so they only have to provide all the documentation and go through like the long form, if you will, every three years. And then, the two years after that is, we call it the short form, where they basically sign a piece of paper certifying that they're still, you know, that's still their primary residence, they're still the homeowner, and that nothing has changed in their financial picture. And if they do that, then, you know, they get the same amount of relief they got last year.
Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I do recognize that we're a little bit different than our surrounding localities, but, you know, this is the system that we've had in place here for a long time, and I think that, you know, if you're here, you understand the system. You have people on your staff, Ms. Acosta, that also tune to assisting people with filling out the long form. I'm reluctant to tinker with it. There are two things before we enter into a discussion about which would be better in terms of adjustment that disturbing greatly. The first one is that our asset limit is, is, is high. It's, you could have $540,000 and flow around in whatever, you know, back account, stocks, bonds, it's independent of any money you've pulled out of your house. Your house is not included. So, the other jurisdictions, there are two of them, the larger counties are much less, $340,000. So, there, it seems to be more equitable, that if you're asking for relief, you can't have over half a million dollars of money just flowing around somewhere. The second part goes to a point that was made by Councilmember Snyder at one of the previous sessions, which is that, you know, if we grant relief, then how does the city recoup that equitably? You know, we, we give it to someone who's 65, they could have just bought the house last year, so there's no, there's no requirement for residency in that protected domicile, and then if they pass on, then their heirs accrue all the benefit, and none that ever comes back to the city. So, there is that question of what's equitable for the rest of taxpayers. So, those are two major items I have before we even get into a discussion about changing. And, you know, I don't know that makes, again, much difference in, in adjusting this so that it reflects what we do in the adjoining counties. We're not Arlington, we're not Fairfax, we're certainly not Alexandria, so I think it has to work for the city. It has to work for all of us in the city, and we are small. So, we are by far the smallest number of taxable parcels. You know, 4,592 is a, is tiny, minuscule compared to Fairfax County with 353,695 parcels. It's, there are things that I don't think that we can do that is operational at that scale, and as you observed moments ago, that the Treasurer usually doesn't get involved in these transactions, it's handled by administrative staff, so. More as this discussion goes on. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Sir, I'm going to continue to ask questions. This is, this rabbit hole runs deep, and I know there have been a lot of questions around the confusion related to this, and some folks here in the audience, and who have sent some correspondence, and I am equally inquisitive. Can you, what's the age limit, again?
65.
65?
Or 100% disabled.
Or 100% disabled. And who qualifies? How do you go about qualifying to be 100% disabled? I mean, what organization?
If you're receiving Social Security disability income, we ask for that, and if not, we ask for letters from two doctors certifying that you're 100% totally disabled.
Okay. And then, the asset limit, is that net worth? Is that just, is that general asset limit, or is that net worth exclusive of home equity?
It's just general asset.
Just general assets?
Yeah.
So, no consideration for liabilities or anything like that?
We ask for their liabilities, but they don't really come, it's just the asset limit that they have to qualify on. I'm not even sure why we ask for the liabilities on the application form.
Okay. And then, Councilman Z mentioned something. Is there an occupancy requirement? So, if you qualify for this?
As long as you're, you're resident December 31 of the previous year. So, if they were a resident, they owned their home on December 31 of 2017, they can apply in 2018, and they're 65 or 100% disabled, they can apply for relief in 2018 in, in Falls Church.
Okay. But conceivably, you could rent it out to an heir or someone like that?
Well, you have to state that it's your primary residence. So, we do, you know, look at that. We look at things like if they have cars registered here. We use a skip trace software that tells us if they have another address, you know, that kind of thing.
Okay. I would say the, the asset limit does seem high to me, especially if it's just general assets, doesn't take into consideration any liabilities, and certainly doesn't consider home equity, which if you're 100% disabled, I was, we were talking, I thought it was 55, but if it's 65, I think that warrants looking at, okay, that's all the questions I have at this point. Thanks.
Okay. Sure.
I had more. So, when people come in saying that they don't use deferral because of interest, do they cite that the asset limit is too high? That they don't qualify? Like, if they're looking for relief and they find out that they have too much?
No. I think we only have four people in the program whose asset limits comes close to that. Most people's around $200,000 or $300,000 for their asset limits. But, yeah, they just, they don't want to pay the interest, they don't want to leave that burden, you know, they say, on their heirs.
Okay. I don't know if we're ready to move on to the options, or if we still want to?
Let me just ask a follow-up question, just out of curiosity. If someone has a pension, let's say, defined benefit plan, that could be worth $50,000 if somebody gets a stream of income, that's not considered an asset, is it?
It is.
So, you actually, well, how do you know what the value of a defined benefit plan is?
Well, they have to give us all their documentation every three years, so.
So, if you get a pension from General Electric for $2,000 a month, how do you determine what the value of that is?
Well, that would be income.
So, but you only look at a pension from income, but if someone's drawing on their 401K, you know, the SEP IRA?
Right. Like the 401K, the IRA?
That's an asset, though.
That would be an asset, yes.
So, I just, to me, it's sort of imbalanced, because, for example, to get an income stream of $2,000 a month, you may actually have a plan that's worth millions of dollars, but if you're trying to draw on your own amount of, you know, for, people don't have pensions. "I don't have a pension, I just got money socked away." Seems like in some ways, it kind of hurts those people, because they may have a pot of money they're trying to live on for an indefinite period of time.
Right.
And that, that's maybe excludes them, because it's above a certain threshold, where someone else has got a pension from the federal government and military, or whatever, that actually probably has a higher value, yet doesn't exclude them, because it's not, quote, like a liquid asset.
Is that why our, I mean, that might be one of the reasons why our asset limit is higher, just because of what he said? We just don't really know, but, I mean, that's the way it works. I mean, a half million dollars doesn't go as far as it used to. If you're actually trying to live off having retirement, you know, that's only throwing off $25,000, $30,000 a year at most, not that much probably even. So, if you've got a pension, then you're okay. So, I mean, that goes, sorry, goes to Mr. Z's question about, you know, the asset loans. To me, the asset limit doesn't seem, that we have, doesn't seem out of line, just for that reason. I wonder, looking at Fairfax City, which is the only jurisdiction that's anywhere near or close to us, they have about twice as many parcels, and yet they have six times as many parcels in the relief program, and they're, you know, bands, and they use the percentage method, it just looks simpler.
Right.
And do we know? Now, sure, their asset limit is lower, so they're different from us in that regard. Do we have any, any idea why Fairfax City, you know, has the kind of program that it has? Are they thinking about changing their income limits, which are not as generous as Arlington's, but more generous than ours?
I have not heard that they are. They also don't have a deferral program, as, nor does Fairfax County. I spoke with both of them. The Department of Taxation in Fairfax County said that they did away with their deferral program 1990-something. They said there wasn't that much interest in it, so they just did away with it.
So, they just debate everything?
Mm-hmm. They said there's been some talk of bringing it back, but nothing concrete.
I get the, I mean, I get the equity argument. I feel like if we had a simple method to apply, and it sounds like, you know, you're getting there, and, you know, reasonable numbers, that it's reasonable then for us to expect that, you know, a deferral is the fairer way to go, because, you know, it's not fair to not pay any taxes at all, even if you've lived here for 50 years, everybody's still got to do their part from beginning to end. So, I get it that deferral seems like the fairer way to go, but, I don't know, the, I certainly wouldn't lower our asset limits, and, you know, if we have a annual escalator in the numbers that we use, so 4,000 becomes, you know, 5,000 in a couple of years, so that that's built in and, you know, grows its way up, I guess that's okay compared to the simple percentages.
Jody, is the, sorry, is the asset limit definition consistent across the jurisdictions? Do you know?
It is.
Yes.
All of them. They don't take the house or the land into consideration.
Right. And the taxable parcel list that you have up there, is that inclusive of all residential and commercial? Or is that just residential?
The taxable parcels is residential and commercial.
So, it's both?
Yes.
I think it paints the, the percentages in a bit of a different context, just because there's a whole lot of condo parcels? Because condos are, separate parcels are established for those, and you look at Arlington County and Fairfax County and others, they've just got thousands of them, thousands of condo parcels.
They also have more commercial.
Right. A lot of condo.
Oh, I wanted to talk about the two options, if we're ready to move on. So, I care about how many more people we're helping between the two options. If I'm reading the chart correctly, in option one, it sounds like we're helping three more people, but for the 30 who are in the program, they would get 100% relief.
Right.
And so, it would cost us double almost amount. So, the relieved amount from where we currently are is 113,000, and would go to 210. So, we help, we think three more people, because of the more generous program, maybe three more people would come apply, but then the 30 people get 100% relief. Is that my understanding of essentially the main change in option one?
Yes. And also, I based all the, on both options, I based on a 3% assessment increase and the tax rate of 137.5.
Okay.
So, that's another reason for the increase in numbers.
So, then, option two, we help more people slightly, but we have more people in deferral, we think, although there's no deferral number. Help me understand kind of how many people we help in option two?
So, in option two, if we kept the dollar limits, but we raised our income levels, okay? And then, we offered deferral at 0% interest. So, that, that column for deferral that you see in option two, that's if everybody deferred everything, like, you know, what they didn't get relief on, they deferred. I'm assuming 100% deferral on, you know, the balances, because it would be 0% interest. Now, I'm sure that not, not everyone is going to defer. You know, some, some will still fall into that category of, I don't want to leave that burden on my heirs, and they won't defer, but this is just, just, you know, like, if everyone deferred, since it was 0% interest. So, that would be the impact.
Got it. So, originally, we talked about how what wasn't on the chart was kind of like a pseudo Level 4, so people who are above, sorry, my screen went away, the income limit of 50,000, so people who made between 50 and 70, so, 1,000 could still defer.
That would still remain, yes.
But we wouldn't have that in option two anymore, because you'd be raising the limits to 52, the highest income level would be 52.
You'd still get relief.
Mm-hmm. And so, we think that would cost us similar amount of program, like $370,000 or so?
Exactly.
So, from a budget impact, the same 45,000 that we've been talking about for FY '19?
Mm-hmm. That's right. I think we said 372, but, yeah.
We currently have 327,000 in the budget.
The proposal, though, it's not a dollar amount, that's just a rough estimate. It could be, you know, a zillion more people come up, and that would have a disordinant impact, particularly the first year, right? Because you have more people coming in, nobody's paying off anything, they're all basically drawing it down. So, we don't really know what, that's just your kind of eyeball number?
Yeah. Based on the current pool of participants, based on the fact that we do have people in the program who are, you know, they're on that upper, you know, $50,000, $60,000 range for income, and their assets are, you know, I think, like I said, we have four people who are in that category, who assets are closer to the 500,000. So, you know, and the fact that we already offer 100% deferral with your income up to 75,000, but we don't have anybody who's actually, you know, done that, I, you know, I think that, you know, we're solid with these numbers, but, yeah, we won't know for sure until we do it.
Okay. Other questions, comments, thoughts?
Well, one thing that I was going to tell you is that, and I'll just wrap it up here. I read Ms. Irwin's comments regarding the tax relief process, and I would say that I, I agree that we should, you know, have more of a discussion and more community input. That's what I would like to see. I'd like to see us have a committee. I think that we can, you know, budget for the 45,000 and the FY '19 budget, and have a committee to study it, because we don't really have to enact that ordinance until next January, when we, you know, start the next relief year. And at that time, if, you know, the committee came back and it was going to cost more, we could, it would have to be with the understanding that it would be phased in, or that it might not be passed at all. But before we rewrote the ordinance, you know, that's what I would like to see. So, and that might address some of the things, like the application process, and outreach, and things like that.
Mr. Shields, do you have any comment?
We've been pushing to try to give council options, so that she could take action with the budget adoption, but as the Treasurer says, really, the hard deadline is next fall. When we've, the Treasurer's done great work on this, and, but there is a lot more to learn and sort of study about it. So, I think that is, I, I agree with the Treasurer, that more time probably would produce a better result.
Yeah, we really haven't had any public input at all, other than one email. There you go. Thank you. But we really have not had any public hearings, or people have an opportunity to comment and to really get community input, so I think that's certainly an important consideration. I don't know if people have other thoughts?
No, I agree. So, we think that the 45,000 that we're factoring in the budget would take care of either option, or some permutation, as long as it doesn't get wildly expensive.
Right. Exactly.
So, Mr. Shields, are you suggesting we allocate the money and just sort of park 45,000 in this budget, and then figure out what to do with it over the coming months by January?
Yes.
So, the message is sent that, I mean, to me, the important message is, you know, So the message is sent that, to me, the important message is, we value the role of the elderly in the community. The story of the budget, a chapter of it is, we understand that the tax rate is a burden to some people, and the elderly segment particularly. We value them, we want to frankly slow the rate of turnover in that segment of our population, and we're going to be taking steps to try to provide, it sounds like deferral is the avenue that we, but a simpler deferral, a zero-interest rate, streamlined to the degree that it's possible, application process, and well-publicized effort that we'll roll out over the next six months, to try to see that everybody understands what we're doing, and that, maybe provide some assistance to help them apply, that sort of thing. Ms. Hardy?
So I do like deferral as well. I think it seems like it's fair for the current homeowner, and the city also recoup some costs, but I do agree that it would probably be great to get more input. I think Mr. Z might have mentioned it a couple of meetings ago around whether we have any relief for stormwater. Do we currently do that at all?
We do not, and it's not in the code in Virginia.
Do we ever feel like people are burdened by that? Like, we get relief on some, and then?
I did have one homeowner who came in and who really wanted the relief on the stormwater as well, and it was a hardship for her. She asked me for a payment plan to pay the stormwater fee, and it wasn't that much, but she was in that bottom tier for income, so.
But you said the state code does not allow deferral?
It doesn't say you can or you can't, it doesn't address it, right?
I'm not aware that it does, and I think we'd have to take a look at that and see if there's any way we can offer something.
But, go ahead.
Yeah, I would think that if we have a stormwater requirement for everybody, then everyone, whether nonprofit, church, institution, low-income, no-income, you all have, everyone has a liability of some kind, but that doesn't, I don't think that means that we have to take the direct path of absolving those in the hardship classes of having that responsibility. I think there are other ways of doing this. We could have an offset that we have, that we can enact in the budget, and it could be applied to some of these people. So when you look at whether we're permitted to do, maybe we could look at that. It could even be an out grant to some nonprofit that then pays that stormwater fee. I think there are different ways of skinning that particular cat.
Yeah. Why don't you take a look at it and just let us know what you think?
I'll do that.
Okay. Listen, thank you so much for the fine work you've done. You really did an excellent job for your great work here in the community.
Thanks.
Congratulations to the Treasurer, who today received her designation as, give me the right words, Master Governmental Treasurer. Congratulations. There are pictures, Mr. Benton, I'm told there are pictures.
Can I ask one more question before you go, Ms. Acosta? You said something about Master Acosta. Master Treasurer Acosta. About putting together a committee to work on this? Is that something the council would have to designate, or is that something that you would just pull together?
Or the city manager. I know in Arlington, when they did their working group, it was appointed by the county administrator, so.
So can we do that?
I'd be happy to do that, and I could just consult with the council and have it be a working group, and that way we could keep, get going immediately. We do, November will be here sooner than, so it would be nice to get going on it.
Can we invite Ms. Irwin to be on that group?
There's no deferral of that.
Sorry.
Thanks, sure.
All right, thanks again. All right, Mr. Shields, let's get back at the budget and...
No, I think we're done.
We're done, all right, sounds good. Did you have other information for us on anything?
No, sir. Yeah, we do have responses to the questions. So there were four questions from the last meeting, so this is the last version. I think we hit a new record, but I think we might have tripled the old record. But this is now the consolidated list of questions and responses.
All right, are there questions for Mr. Shields?
I got, just one question on the topic of tax relief. Do we, is there an update yet on the question related to the refuse tax for the folks that were at park towers that came in? Do we have, we're looking for relief, because they were already paying for refuse?
That's right. That's one of the questions in the document, and the response is in there. I don't, I can't put my finger right on it. The basic issue is that that is a pretty complex policy question.
47.
And I think that's something we probably would need to study over the next couple of months to bring back to the council, A, with what the cost would be if we were to expand it, or B, if we were to convert to a pay-as-you-throw policy, which would take it out of the tax rate. I think those are the two options, and they have pretty big impacts on everybody in the city, and so, or every resident in the city. So we're not charging out to do this work. I think it's another discussion with the council about council work plan and council priorities.
All right. Other questions from Shields, Master, or Sprow? Could I ask a question about the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Number 46 question? So I assume that we probably would have to have Jeff Sykes here to give us chapter and verse, but what I'm trying to come away with during this budget cycle is an understanding of where each of these applications is in the process. You know, is the citizen component done, and it's in staff hands? Is the citizen component underway in some active sense, and staff is actively waiting? Or is the citizen component just in the petition distributed category? I see on West Marshall Street, for instance, petition was distributed in 2015. Well, that's, that would be three years ago now. And so what's the best way to assess our readiness to move on these as we go through the business of distributing resources to get things done?
The projects queued are the ones that the petitions have been received, and the initial analysis has been done with the hoses and the speed counts and that type of thing, and so those are waiting funding. And then the CACT with funding then can make decisions about the options, and get back with the citizens on those options, price them, and then execute. The ones with the projects without completed petitions, I would just note for those, that this is a partnership with the neighborhoods. We're not going to go out there and change streets if the neighbors don't want them. That's what those petitions are for. And we've got a lot of history and experience in that, where you might have a minority on the street that wants something very loudly, but the majority doesn't. And so going out there and making changes actually creates a bigger problem than you might have had initially. And so the petition process is not meant to be bureaucracy or paperwork for the sake of paperwork. It is really meant to make sure that this is the type of partnership that has the support of the street.
That's helpful. That, to me, sounds like the longer a petition has been simmering, the more difficult it must be to achieve the kind of community, neighborhood support that whoever it is that's circulating petition wants. So it's your judgment that, in cases like that, it is that only a minority want some action, a majority don't, and it's not related to some sense that, "We don't have the resources, they'll never get around to us, there's a lot of talk, but no action." You know, we've seen when we apply effort and resources into certain areas that we achieve pretty dramatic results. We had the young folks come and heap high praise on us for the crosswalks at the school bus stop, and I just want some sense that there are not others out there like that, that for whatever reason, we have not hit upon.
So I would, you had mentioned Mr. Sykes. I think it probably would be a good meeting with the CACT and Mr. Sykes, and we could get that scheduled. I think the last time we met with the CACT was over a year ago. You did get the annual report, but that might be a good meeting for us to set up as soon as possible.
Okay, if, as we go forward through this budget year, our circumstances continue to be hopeful, where does Neighborhood Traffic Calming rank in your firmament of additional staff and/or financial resources for the next fiscal year? Because what I'm hearing you saying is that you believe that you've allocated enough money for this coming fiscal year, and you don't really have the staff to handle a whole lot more, or waiting for grants that we've applied for, et cetera, et cetera. Would you see at the beginning of July of '19 as a possibility that we could put more effort in Neighborhood Traffic Calming then with additional staff resources, or is that not where you are at right now?
The priority for staffing, from my recommendation, would be for the grant-funded projects that are focused on the commercial districts. A, those are much bigger projects, they have much bigger impact, and they're more complex, and we have the money for them. The neighborhood projects are smaller, they're less impactful, and the pace that we're doing, I would like to, I would recommend we continue to assess that pace, and if it continues to be a problem in the council's eyes, then we'll try to address it in the future. But right now, I would say the biggest priority would be executing in the commercial districts.
Okay, thanks. Is it Ms. Hardy's turn to ask about, and Mr. Littgenhouse, about the parking?
Wayfinding.
Wayfinding and other things that you all have been conversing about, I understand?
I'm happy to take that. So was that, your recommendations come out of the TOT, the 30,000 extra, or do we have dollars in the budget for that, given that we've heard enough concerns now about downtown parking and downtown improvements in general?
Well, with the additional 30,000, that is a, that expands that pot, and I don't know the details of the pilot parking program. I think in passing conversations, that dollar amount would allow us to get that started as a pilot program. So that is certainly a viable way to fund that. If it were not funded that way, then we would, that would be a markup to the budget, asking for additional funding for that program, and so that would be the other option.
My next question, because I had a running list of just other budget things that I've heard through our past few work sessions, Big Chimneys. I know that we had money set aside from that, from the Harris Teeter project, but I think my understanding from the Park and Rec staff and the advisory board is that they think they need more money there because of stormwater issues. Is that something that will be taken care of, or is that something we need to think of for the budget as well?
I'm looking across the table. That did not come as a specific dollar budget request through the budget process.
I think partly because they don't have all the cost estimates in, they're only at 30 or 35% design, and so they're anticipating, just knowing where the stormwater connection and runs are going to be, it's a larger project than initially anticipated. So we're looking at transportation grants for the intersection improvements nearby. You have the Big Chimneys already funded CIP project, and then the question will be, is that enough, or is there stormwater impacts?
Yeah, my understanding from Mr. Schlitt was that, in discussions with the stormwater folks, that it was not going to be enough to take care of what they found out at Big Chimneys.
That's our preliminary staff analysis, but we don't have the cost estimates in yet, in order to have put it in this budget.
So I think officially where we are is, there's a million-dollar budget for this project, let's get it done within that budget. The one thing that we have changed, you will recall that we put in transportation grants to help on the front side of it with the traffic calming on Annandale, and so that's one way we've gone about to try to expand. Originally, that million dollars was going to go for that traffic calming piece as well. If we can take that off the ledger sheet, that will help a little bit on the park side.
The next one I had was special events. So I know that that's something the Vice Mayor had asked about as well, is currently it's unfunded. So the fact that we have citizens coming to us all the time about wanting to do civic marches and things, it's something that we can't fund currently. Is that, any thinking changed on that?
So you heard from the chief that the special events really comes down to needing more bodies. It's not so much a question of, if there's additional money, that's what it would be for, to help run them safely. So there's that aspect of special events, and we don't have, other than the unmet needs that we described for you in the budget work session, we don't have a firm proposal on that.
So you're thinking we just leave them as unmet, or is it something that we would propose as a markup item?
So if, the chief is here in the room, if we want more directed questions on what those dollar amounts would be? Oh, she just left. But I believe the fully burdened cost for an additional FDE, or a sworn officer, is between 70,000 and 80,000 dollars.
Is the main constraint in police, or are there other parts of staff that are taxed when we have special events?
Public, I think the wreck and park staff, they are fully programmed with the events that we have, and so when we have additional ones that come up, it is that can-do spirit that you see of people saying, "Okay, well, let's try to figure out a way to make this happen." But it does, you know, it's a challenge. The public safety piece is where you've really got that kind of hard, we are really stressed. And you did, we didn't dwell on it in the third quarter financial report, but you did notice in the public safety area in that third quarter financial report, it's a pretty significant overage in the public safety realm. That's for reasons relating to doing cord in Arlington County, which is more expensive for overtime and things like that, but that is also related to overtime for special events.
It was also Public Works, wasn't it, that is burdened?
Yes.
Public Works as well.
That's right.
Can I ask one question, following that one? Just following up on what Ms. Hardy just said. I'm wondering if we can do some sort of review or work group on exactly that, special events, and what's our policy, and how do people in the community understand it, and how can we make it much clearer, so that we're not put in the position of being in the Grinch when someone wants to have a holiday parade, but actually being able to lay out the reasons and have it be there pretty simply?
That's right.
Can we put that on the work plan?
Yes.
Thank you.
So while on the topic of police, I think one of the questions I had submitted, since we've been talking so much about making sure we're right, staffed with ratios and whatnot, is around our public safety. As I know, one of the things we looked at was around police per capita, and I think I had asked a question on red light cameras. And so I was really interested in that, because I think red light cameras pay for themselves in about eight months, and they also have the added benefit of paying back, deterring speeding through traffic intersections. And I saw that it was Annandale and Hillwood was the one that Chief Gavin had thought would have potential for having another one. What I found was a discrepancy between the budget book and the Q and A. So in the budget book, I thought I read that it wouldn't require extra staff in order to add the camera, but then I think from the discussion we had with the chief, we thought we might need extra staff to review the camera footage. I thought that just needed more discussion, whether it's for this year or next year, because again, as our population grows, I want to make sure we're staffed well across all the different areas, especially public safety.
I think to maintain the status quo, the staffing level for that program is adequate. What was noted in the response to the question is that you need a sworn officer to sign off on every violation, and typically that would be an officer or a corporal. They are very often now programmed for other things, and so it ends up being a member of the command staff doing those violations. And so the point in the response to the question was expanding it to an additional intersection, then that will increase the volume so much that that probably won't work anymore, and it does become a staffing problem. And so that has held us back from expanding the program to additional intersections.
Does it have a benefit of also just freeing up the traffic enforcement, like officers' time? Like, if you're not having to manage speeding through an intersection, because now there's a camera there, should that offset essentially?
Well, there's plenty of work for the officers to do, so it, I think the chief describes it as a really great public safety program that is, generally speaking, very efficient for staff. And it's also just a fact that photo-red violations are very hard to write on the street, because of the way you need to witness them. And then to actually make a violation, the officer then needs to run the red light, him or herself, which is dangerous. And so the photo-red program is valuable, because it allows us to do that basic enforcement.
Yeah, I think the intent between Mr. Duncan's Neighborhood Traffic Calming question and the ones around speeding and intersections, in general, I think one of the top concerns we continue to hear across the city is speeding, red light running, and I think just different tools that I think we should consider at our disposal, to kind of how to manage our streets more safely as our city grows.
Okay. I mean, we probably ought to get down to the business of trying to narrow this budget down, and I think maybe go through some of the things that are agreement, maybe there are a few things that we're not totally on the same sheet of music on. Do you guys want to do that, sit down and go through some of the items that we've considered? Mr. Shields, why don't you go through kind of what is in the budget and see if there's some disagreement? For example, like there's $45,000, right, for this tax abatement, deferral slash? For example, like there's $45,000, right, for this tax abatement deferral slash, correct? Is there a general consensus that numbers the appropriate amount? Okay. So, all right, so maybe that's resolved. That's pretty easy. The money for parking that Mr. Littenhouse and Ms. Hardy had discussed earlier, that could come out of the transit occupancy tax, correct? So that doesn't need to be an allocation from the budget, that can come from that special kind of pool of money. Is that correct?
Yes, that is an option for funding it.
Okay, and what would the other option be?
The other option would be as a new item to be funded in the budget, which would need a revenue to pay for it.
Okay, so either take it from this pot of money, which is for downtown improvements and the like, and flower baskets, and holiday lights, et cetera. Do you feel like that's sufficient to do all those things? In other words, obviously, the pot could be indefinitely big, and we probably still have work, but in general, keeping with the amount of money you anticipate spending on these items, would that work with that?
Well, we, if we keep the lights that we have right now, then that was a big part of the appropriation last year. We would maintain those, we're supposed to get three years of service out of those lights. That would allow the full budget to go for planters and the parking item, and other items that last year went primarily for the lights. So we will have more room, A, we'll have more money, 90,000 instead of 60,000, and we won't have to make that expenditure for the lights.
So your plan would be to keep those lights, possibly add to them another block or something like that?
Yeah.
Okay. And those lights will only last three years?
Yeah, the, that's correct. For the, it's a long story. But that is the best information we have, yes.
So there's money in the TOT for expansion of the lights, and take care of some parking and wayfinding issues that we've talked about.
Yeah, so the amount of expansion then will shrink the dollars for other things.
Depending on how the expansion shrinks, I would have some concern about that.
Yeah, I would just like to go on the record that, like see more wayfinding. I think the lights are great. But if we have to squeeze out in the budget, I think wayfinding parking is a good downtown improvement.
All right.
I like your lights, though. I do. I know, I like the lights.
So are people generally in agreement that taking the parking money and the like out of this $90,000 pot, instead of allocating new funds for it, is an appropriate solution? I see a lot of heads nod. Mr. Shields, maybe that's put to bed as well?
Okay.
All right, so what are some other things that we are talking about? I know the school budget, obviously, is one thing. Why don't we put that to the side just for a moment?
Well, we talked about affordable housing at some length in previous meetings, just I think everybody is aware of sort of where we have moved since we talked about it. But in two areas, one, the proffer for the inside Kidder property included a new avenue that might give us cash, that would help beef up the Affordable Housing Fund. That's just one option. And second, the Wesley Group, which is a co-owner of the Fields, which we discussed about here, came to our Housing Commission meeting last week and basically said, you know, we have an active interest in doing something there. And essentially, as I understood it, asked us to step back and let them do their thing for, I think he said they'd come back to the Housing Commission in a couple of months. So I took away from that meeting, I think Ms. Hardy was there too, and she should speak to it. I took away from that meeting that it would be premature for us to try to put any money into the Affordable Housing Fund. And this year's budget cycle, as had been mentioned by one of the PowerPoints that we saw when we last heard about this issue, which is all fine with me.
Okay, so that's good. And I think we have got some flexibility with insight that can give us maybe possibly even several millions of dollars of money if we need cash instead of on-site or decide to do that. And there are also other projects potentially coming on the pike, which can add to that pot over time as well. So I think you're right, there has been some addressing of that issue. All right, so what other items do we have? And again, I know the school budget will be something we'll spend some time on as well. But are there other items of disagreement or conversation that are not included right now, that people feel ought to be? Okay, so Ms. Hardy?
Sorry, I'm looking through my list again.
We're doing so well. Put that list away.
So related to parking, but more the near term, the spring, I guess the spring and summer, kind of the repainting and refreshing adding spots on Park Avenue. Wyatt, is that taken care of in the FY18 budget, or do we think we need more? I know the EDA had also offered money too.
Yes, that's intended to be taken care of in FY18.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there other items that people want to insert into the budget? Where does that leave us right now, Mr. Shields, if in fact, what we just described, what does that take the tax rate up?
So the tax rate increase would be 2.5 cents over the current rate.
Based on the conversation we've just had?
Yes.
Mr. Z.
I'd like to have some language drafted up that speaks to, speaks to the treatment of the WAMADA funds, if indeed Wednesday comes and nothing happens, and we feel encumbered to fund WAMADA. Some of us would feel encumbered to fund WAMADA, that, you know, we would be able to fence that amount and not spend it, or whatever else that we can do to hold it administratively until such time as the Assembly is able to pass a budget that gives us full resolution. Is that a clear request?
It is, I don't know. Mr. Shields, why don't you discuss how that would work?
Are you referring, I don't fully understand it. So is that under the 2.5 cent tax scenario, or?
That would be.
A higher tax rate scenario?
A higher tax rate.
Okay. So if no action is taken on Wednesday, then the council would want to have an option for a higher level of funding for WAMADA with a provision that that money be fenced and sort of lockboxed only for that purpose. And then the council could, depending on how WAMADA ultimately gets resolved, then the council could determine how that money would be used.
I think you got it. Thank you.
I agree with you up to a point, but when you said fence the money, I mean, so we're not going to pass a tax rate that collects money that we may or may not need to use. I'd prefer, that's one option, we could do that. But I'd prefer to see us, you know, look at our money that we heard about earlier in the evening, there's other cash around, there's, you know, other items of the budget. Between now and when we actually find out about WAMADA, you know, at the very end of our fiscal year, we should be able to make up a certain amount of money without necessarily having to raise the tax rate next Monday to do it. He said, asserting.
Not very much.
He said, asserting back. Well, I mean, seriously, you've got $300,000, we talked about it today, it could be used for any number of things that CFO talked about, or we could have a discussion about using it for that. We could have that discussion.
That is true.
I'm not sure I follow what's going on here in some regards. So essentially.
If I'm positive, I don't follow it at all.
Well, so let's say WAMADA, it gets, it doesn't get resolved on Wednesday. If it gets resolved on Wednesday, we know our answer, right? Our answer is either it is what we think it is, or it's something else. That's if it gets resolved. If it by chance does not get resolved, then we don't have resolution, we can put some money aside trying to anticipate what the resolution would be. Or is there another option that, you know, will we come back and we amend our ordinance, you know, two weeks from now, when there is final resolution, or whatever that day may come? Is that an option as well, what I just described?
Yeah, the idea of going back to amend the budget right after adoption sounds awful. But it is an option.
So does side putting hundreds of thousands of dollars.
That's right. It is.
Exactly. So does collecting money that we may or may not need.
Right.
That's a, that is an awful outcome.
Well, I think it goes, the question of whether there's some anti-deficiency clause that if we have agreed to fund it, for example, that we need to collect it.
I think, as Mr. Snyder noted at the beginning, I think the chance of there being a material change to the WAMADA numbers is very small. It does exist, but it's a very, it's a small chance. I don't know that it merits a whole ton of discussion tonight. If it happens, then we'll have to adjust to it next Monday night. But it's a small enough chance that it doesn't merit a whole lot of contingency planning right now, I don't think.
You sure we don't want you to do an extraordinary amount of work preparing for an extremely minor probability? Because that'll be mostly you doing the work, not us.
That's why they call it Monte Carlo simulation.
Okay. All right, so what else is out there that can resolve as far as expected? So at present, that's a 2.5, a 2.5, I know, a 2.5 cent tax increase. And of course, that takes into account that certain items will be done at a later point, for example, Fellows' property, the $7 million, you know, for the additional money for school aid and other expenses, similar expenses, and the like. So that is pushed off. And how much are we pushing off to next year, based on those items?
Approximately 6 million for the, I'm sorry, 4 million for the school project, and another 4 million for the Fellows' property.
Which comes out to approximately how much of a tax increase to support that at present?
About a penny, yeah. Yeah. So we, you know, we'll, the council will have the chance, you know, with next year's budget to evaluate that, but that is our best read and our best projection right now.
Okay. All right, so unless there are other things, then I guess the school, excuse me?
I said wrong.
Okay, so yeah, unless there's other things, I think we're maybe on agreement on everything, except for this last bit, maybe we're in agreement on that as well. But why don't we talk a little bit about the school proposal and how that plays into things? Wyatt, if you could just take us through, I guess just for background that people are probably aware of, the number of the request is 2.8% increase. The specific guidance, so the legal guidance was 2.5, 2%, in our meeting, maybe in December, recollection serves, or November.
That's correct.
So give us the tax increase implications of both, if you could, 2.8% and 2%? What would be the tax increase on each of those?
Ms. Ba has those numbers before her.
So 2.8% is, I'm sorry. 2.8% is a total increase of 1.17 million over.
What's the total, like, for example, when you pile that in with our budget, that comes out to 2.5%? 2.5% tax increase?
2.1.
2.5. If you put in the 2.8%, that's what?
Right.
So that gets you 2.5 cent increase. If you were a guidance, the guidance that was given in November, December, or whatever it was, at 2%.
There are 350,000 over guidance, which is roughly 85% of a cent.
So then, at 2%? All right, so do we have some discussion, if you want to have any discussion comments on that?
I think I, I think I start, is that it?
You don't have to, but you can.
Okay, I don't have to either, then by all means. I mean, I just, you know, we've made tremendous progress since, you know, we all sat here last fall and worried that, you know, the tax increase is going to have to be at least 6 cents, if not more. So I think we all have to acknowledge that a lot of hard work has gone into making that happen, you know, and economic development, and careful spending, and good luck in the national economy and our local economy. So, I mean, I'm always keen on the budget story being more about the good things that are in the budget, and less about, you know, haggling over, you know, a relatively small amount of money. So I do want to acknowledge, you know, a lot of good, hard work that's been done, and appreciate that. And yet, I have to acknowledge that, you know, we don't have $300,000, you know, growing on a tree somewhere, so we do need to talk about that. You know, I think this year, probably everybody would just be happy if I'd turn the mic off and we'd just go home, and I get that. But my concerns are, I guess, looking forward, and since our friends from the school board and staff have been kind enough to sit and listen to us, it's the years down the road that I do want to spend some time thinking about myself before I decide how I'm going to vote. You know, we've enjoyed good economic growth, the Consumer Price Index is 2.4%. We're talking about giving people a 3% COLA, so we're raising well over CPI. School enrollment's been flat the last year. You know, a lot of these other needs that we've talked about here tonight, we're, you know, we're paying attention to them, we're essentially kind of taking a little more time to deal with them. You know, we're not spending a lot of money on affordable housing, or neighborhood traffic calming, or some of the other things we've talked about here tonight. And, you know, in that, in that restraint mode that we're in, to me, it's reasonable to ask, what are we going to do in years going forward when we're not in such fortunate circumstances, when the economy is not growing as well, when, you know, the national situation's different, when, you know, we understand the implications of the state and local tax change at the federal level, and how that's going to affect our people, when, you know, we get the bids on the new school and the economic development that's supposed to support it, there's a lot that we don't know. And I'm just concerned about one thing really, which is committing to salary increases, and caveat that we never pay anybody enough to teach our children. Understand, reading the news press, that I am opposed to paying teachers, according to Eric Wright, whoever Eric Wright is. I'm not opposed to paying teachers. But, you know, I'm concerned for others who come later here, if the CPI is running at 2, 2.5, and we're increasing staff pay, 3, and that expectation gets built in, even in years when enrollment, you know, is barely nudged, then we're creating a real environment here that we are going to need to grow very aggressively every single year to afford And, you know, this council's pretty committed to economic growth, as we saw Monday night. But, you know, can we sustain that? Because if we don't sustain it, the revenues to produce that sort of salary increase are going to have to come out of a higher tax rate. And I at least think that we have reached the outer limit of our difference between Arlington, which is the jurisdiction that most here people, I hear people compare ourselves to. We've reached the outer limits of our competitiveness with Arlington. And to go any further out of alignment with them risks having people decide, you know what, I can pay $1 million for a house in Arlington, and I can pay $3,000 or $4,000 a year's less in taxes, because their tax rate is about a buck. And that just concerns me. And I'd like to have a discussion now about what our long-term strategy is to deal with that, as we try to become, you know, the best-paying jurisdiction anywhere in the metropolitan area. I think that should be our objective. But if we're going to have that as an objective, then we're going to have to be much more aggressive about economic growth than we have been even up to date. And we've been pretty aggressive up to date, because I don't think there's any more space left in the tax rate. Therefore, I would like to see us consider as an alternative, a budget that would peg the schools' growth rate at guidance, and have a discussion about these issues that I've brought up.
All right, other comments, questions? Of course you can, Vice Mayor.
Luckily for all of us, I went back and watched the guidance meeting, because we keep talking about guidance and what was said that night. And I wanted to go back and see exactly what was said and where we were. And so taking a page from Mr. Duncan's book, I have written all my notes on index cards here. So I watched the meeting, and I was struck by a couple of things. One is, how much was different just four months ago? So the first thing is, we were sitting in council chambers, and it looked different. The second thing is, the only thing Mr. Littenhouse was able to say was, I do, when you took the oath of office that night. We had to make the 10 o'clock declaration, that we were going to go beyond 10 o'clock, because that was Ms. Oliver's thing. At the time, we were hoping for 3% organic growth, which we have exceeded. There was concern about WAMADA, and we really had no idea then where it was going to land. And there was no mention at all of affordable housing that evening. Some other things that are the same, oh no, those are the different things. These are the things that are the same. no, those are the different things. These are the things that are the same. Ms. Hardy said that regardless of where we end up at 2 or 3 or where we end up in April, hopefully we're all starting from shared commitment to the future. And I just want to say, I appreciate that all through this, you have remained constant, that you're really looking to the future in everything you do. Mr. Z used the term goat roping, which he used again last week. You were concerned that a 2 percent increase was artificial and that we were going to spend the next four months arguing over that, and you were right on target. Mr. Snyder said he was committed to reducing the WAMADA burden, and he said, regardless of what we say tonight, I'm not going to vote for something that sacrifices the quality of our schools or core city functions. And you have always been consistent on that. Mr. Tarter, you had a very long one, but basically you said it's better to start out conservative and then look at the alternatives and see where we end up when all these other things fall into place. And I asked if we were shooting ourselves in the foot by issuing guidance that was contradictory. Does it call for, we're calling for supporting our staff, and then we're also calling for a 2 percent increase. And could we do both at the same time? So I asked that as we went through the process, we need to keep in mind that it's an iterative process, and it's going to get tighter as we go along. And that's exactly what's happened. It has been iterative. And the 6 cents that we were talking, the 6 cent increase that we were talking about back in November and December has dissipated a lot, down to 2.5 cents. So, and another thing that's different in years past is I've never seen it tighten up so well. We always talk about where we're going to start and where we're going to end up, and how nice it would be if, if we could keep it as low as possible. And in, now this is my fifth year of doing this, I can't believe that we're down so much lower. And then the last thing I want to say is, way back in November, before any of this happened, Mr. Duncan and I had a conversation, and he said, "I'm going to be really bold and say 3 cents. That's it. 3 cent increase is what we're going to have." So you even knew more than that, because we can keep it at 2.5 cents and fulfill everything in guidance that we've asked the city manager and school superintendent to do. So I think we're done.
You looked at the video, but it's all fake news. Yes, right, there's someone in a beard with, all right, so thank you for your comments. Other people, other folks, Ms. Hardy.
I did have a question. So speaking of looking at the future, I see that one of the questions I asked, and I was skimming through the Q and A, on 65, I think I asked that because we were deferring essentially what I call the mini-modified CIP, deferring 7 or 8 million dollars into next year, we think we, in order to pay for Fellows and the extra bonds that we're going to need next year, that's another cent. But in the chart, if I'm understanding both the write-up and the chart, it looks like it's 5 cents stable?
That's correct. When we projected the 6 cents, when we did the full CIP, if you may recall, even though the CIP at that time did not include the TJ, the Thomas Jefferson, we had put a placeholder for 15 million and fiscal year '21 for that one. However, this has been revised. You asked for a revised chart, and now TJ, based on the 10-year horizon that we saw in the current six-year CIP and the four-year addition to that, it's placed in fiscal year '26, '27. So that no longer requires us to, if the economic development funding comes through, since it, earlier it was placed in '21, it mitigates the effect by a cent.
So because TJ is also moving out?
Yes.
It does not mean that, that 1 cent essentially gets buffered, essentially?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, got it. So it's 5 cents, not each year, it's the?
It's 5 now, and?
Or 2.5 if we think that's enough now, because we got savings from other places.
And, and not just 2.5, and we continue the operating as-is.
Operating with a?
Because we have committed a lot of our operating into paying the debt service.
Yep. So remind me that, what is that assumption around operating growth in this one, in this chart?
So the operating growth was that anything over the 2 percent essentially is going towards the capital projects.
Got it.
So should, should there be a decline in our revenues that will impact that, I mean, we can, we may, we may have to go over?
So this chart assumes 2 percent revenue and expenditure growth?
No, this chart assumes that 2 percent of our organic growth will be for the operations. The remaining is going towards capital.
Got it.
Because, based on your guidance.
Got it. So this chart assumes 2 percent operating growth. If we have more than 2 percent operating growth each year, then you need more taxes essentially to pay for it. Got it. And Mr. Shields, or Ms. Bauer, what is, with everything that we've talked about in the budget, what is our operating growth percent?
The organic.
Total, so by increase, without, yeah, the organic, without the 2.5 cent increase, we were at 3.7 percent?
Just, just the revenues was 3.7 percent for next year that we are projecting.
Thank you.
And essentially, by operations, I mean at current service levels with the efficiencies that have been introduced by the city manager and the budget. We're not adding any additional services or things. So at the 2 percent of our increase over last year, or current year's budget is for the operations, the remaining revenues are being diverted towards paying for the capital projects, other debt service.
So given this year's budget?
Right.
I think general government was coming at 1.7.
Yes.
Operating budget growth, schools are at 2.8.
That's correct.
What does that net out to be?
Well, both the base amounts are different, so I'll add that up while you guys go through your other questions.
What essentially I'm trying to get to is, does the CIP financing plan hold, assuming operating budgets grow at the rate we're going this year? Right? Or do we think that, gosh, if we're going to grow at this rate that we are planning to talk about again and vote on Monday, do we think that this is not sufficient, right? Does that make sense?
So, so with the 2.5 cent increase at the moment that we have at the table, if, if the revenues grew at the rate at which they're growing at this year, and the WAMADA stays within the way it is, no other increases, then of course, we will have that funding to go fund the debt service, the additional debt service, continue to. However, if WAMADA were to increase or the operations needed more increases than the 1.7 and the 2 and .8, whatever it is, then we'd, we'd need more operating funding to go towards operations versus the debt service.
So I think what she was asking, though, is your model is based on 2 percent operating budget growth, correct? So that the, is that correct?
The 2.5 percent.
AV growth.
AV growth.
And remember, we always held operating budgets separate.
Yeah.
When we talked, when we gave this chart last July, this was a capital financing plan. And we said, operating budgets, that, that's a whole different issue. And that remains the case. So, you know, what you have in this budget is 5 cents for the capital program. If you recall, with the organic revenue growth, our operating budgets would allow for a 3 cent decrease in the tax rate. So you have 5 cents for capital and 1 half cent for WAMADA. That's why you have 2.5 cents.
Do you have more questions, Ms. Hardy? All right, are there other comments? Seeing none, people can certainly speak up. Why don't you, for purposes of Monday, Mr. Shields, since there doesn't appear to be a consensus on this issue, come up with two budgets. One shows the 2 percent, you know, two proposals, one at the 2 percent growth and one at 2.8 percent growth, and we can bang it out on Monday. I don't see it being resolved. I don't think there is a consensus. Maybe there is. Is there a consensus?
We can certainly do that.
What's that?
We can certainly do that. The, I think the only point of discussion is if there's any other variation that the Council wants. But we, if it's just two, that's, I'm not asking for more, but that would be the, this would be the time to discuss it.
We can come split the difference, right?
Well, it's just, what we try to avoid is changing numbers on the dais just because it percolates through all the ordinances. And so the ideal situation is a sense that the two options that you have are really the two that you want to be considering. You'll, you'll adopt one or the other rather than change numbers on the dais. That's the ideal situation. Now, we could scramble and try to make it work from the dais, but it's risky because, well, we could likely get a number wrong somewhere in one of the lines or somewhere in the ordinance.
I think the, the two cases that the mayor proposed are basically based on the principles that you've heard. So I don't know that we'll split it somewhere in between, even though I think we've done that more than once, as I recall. And I understand your distaste for that. But I think here, this time around, we basically have two positions based on principle.
Any other comment? All right, why don't we move on? We've got a closed session. Is there anything else to talk about, the budget was, before we move on to a closed session?
Nope, that's it.
All right, so why don't we take a five-minute break and then go into our closed session? And if the school folks would like to come to the closed session, Mr. Shields, would that be all right? I know the, the subject matter of the closed session is in public record, correct?
The subject matter is?
It's, it's, so what the, what the motion would be is to go into closed session for the discussion of?
And Mayor, you should have a copy of the motion in your red folder.
I do, and I mean, I'm certainly, we'll read it when the time comes, but I guess I wanted to make sure that it'd be okay.
Right.
Let me just use the exact wording.
I don't think it's, it's, it's necessary. We could maybe chat offline in the five-minute break, and then we can get back together.
All right, that's fine. All right, why don't we take a five-minute break? Let people clear out, mics go down.
Can I clarify, shall we do the motion before we go into break and we go off record? Can we go into closed session after the TV's off?
It'd be, it'd be better to go into break for five minutes and then come back. That would be?
You want to do, you want to do the closed session on, on camera? Is that what you want to do?
Do you want, do you want the motion to go into closed session on camera? That's all I want to confirm, because while we take the break, I'll shut things down.
All right, that's fine. Upon a motion made by Councilmember Z, it doesn't work. And seconded by Councilmember?
Connolly.
Connolly, and passed by a voice vote of City Council, Council went into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A5 for discussion or consideration of prospective business or industry or expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating facilities in the community. Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Z?
Yes.
Councilmember Tarter, yes. All right. It is now 9:35. So let's take a five-minute break, and we'll go into closed session.